It is 5:30. If you could call the regular June board meeting of the Emery and Kennedy Village Board of Education to order by standing and pledging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Engel?
Present.
Mr. Zappa?
Present.
Mrs. Gillis?
Present.
Dr. Messer?
Present.
Mrs. Waters?
We entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as it's presented, including any intedents which you may have received today. Motion in a second, please. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, item five on the agenda would be a facilities update and board discussion. Do you want?
Yeah, correct. So, at our special board meeting last week, we had a nice discussion with the entire board about an update from the facility advisory committee and also what we're kind of thoughts are as far as our facilities for the week forward. So, real quick, I want to do another update from you. From last week's meeting to today, we had some things we wanted to, the board asked us to kind of go on the information form and bring it back, so I wanted to do that for you. So again, this is just for, we'll do kind of a quick run through with what we discussed last week for everyone in attendance, so they can kind of be caught up to speed. And so, starting off with first, how in the spring, we had a facility advisory committee meeting that met, a committee that met four times throughout the last couple of months. I'll get the board members on the committee, also many staff members and community members on the committee as well. And so, from that...
Where'd you go?
That, yeah.
Yeah, you did that.
And the focus, of course, was on our facilities and where we're at and where we're headed. So, going back to what we initially started with before the committee met, was we did a community survey. So I wanted to catch everyone to get up to speed on what we talked about last week, a little bit of where the community was at when we first started this process. So, next slide. So remember, we were asking the community questions about the condition of all of our school buildings in our district. This is just one of the examples that I brought into the table, which was in looking at all of our school buildings, yes, community identified both Nord and Steel as having some general condition issues and some needed upkeep in those buildings, where Powers and AJH, they feel, are in excellent or good condition. In looking at that, we asked the community the question, you know, knowing that we have some issues at Nord and Steel, what would you say would be the investment needed to get those into a good, excellent condition? And of course, the community responded by saying they recognize that it's not a small amount. They recognize that it's a moderate amount and most say it's a significant amount. So most of our community realizes that we have some issues in our buildings and it's going to need a little bit of an investment by the community and they know that. Then we talked a little bit about, we asked the community, what are some of the concerns about French future growth? Again, 77% said our buildings aren't kind of already too crowded of capacity. Then we talked a little bit about, on the far end there, 23% of the parents selected or community members selected that, they were concerned about the cost, but it was not one of the major concerns. Again, going back to the last slide, I think the community realizes that investment needs to be made and so they have other concerns that are more important to them at the time. We also asked the community, what are some other spaces that are important to offer to the families and the rest of the community? And of course, naturally, they said that athletic facilities and performing arts spaces are kind of something that's on their radar as being important to offer to the community. So that comes us all back to permanent improvements and how we need to make permanent improvements and we've been doing that for decades. And so, moving forward though, how do we take care of some of those permanent improvements that we know are some of the needs we have in addition to just our buildings like Steel and Nord? So we've talked a little bit about one of the biggest needs, a transportation facility, which we've talked about. The facility advisory committees also recognize that as the number one priority because of the condition of our current facility and the buses would drop to reopen on the elements and so on. But also, some other non-academic upgrades that need to be done with, for example, our athletic fields, the fencing and seating at the stadium, our track, our tennis courts, and some of the other additional upgrades around with mostly athletics. But not just athletics, any other non-academic facilities we have in the district. So, projected some costs up there. We know transportation facility, you know, three years ago, it started about eight million. Over the last few years, it's climbed to about 11.3 million. So, over time, the more we wait to address some of these issues, the more it's going to cost. So that brings us to where we are today, where we discussed last week in a special board meeting with David Connolly from Rock Mill, present also. What are some ways that we can move forward with taking care of some of these projects and how could we fund them? That was one of the main points about the facility advisory committee is we can't keep going back to the voters for multiple bond issues over the years, nor can we afford going to the voters for one major bond issue. We know other districts in the area that have tried that recently and are going to continue to try that. And again, one big project, a hundred million, a hundred and thirty million, a hundred and fifty million, is not something maybe we should be tackling in the district, nor is it something that we can, we have the debt capacity to do that anyway. So knowing that we have to break this up into multiple projects over multiple years, and also, we talked about working with the Ohio Facilities Destruction Commission and how last week, here's an update, last week I got an email from them saying that we are further than two years out for a possible co-funded project. So, with that being said, that means that the academic spaces of possibly a new building for enrollment, upgrades to Steel and Nord, the facility advisory committee would recommend waiting until we got the co-funding from the state about two or three years from now. And being unsure about where we are with enrollment, we'll see what happens in August when we come back, but I'm not sure whether a building is needed immediately now or not. So we're going to find out if we see the next year or two enrollment goes. But knowing that we have to do multiple projects and knowing that OFCC will only co-fund academic spaces, OFCC will not fund transportation centers, athletic facilities, a board office, et cetera. So knowing we have to split those up and knowing we want to wait for OFCC for a co-funding project possibly, waiting two, three, four years or after that to do these other upgraded facilities, the costs are just going to climb. Eleven million, thirteen million, fifteen million. So the FAC came back with a proposal to the board to suggest maybe we tackle these issues now. And how can we do that without going to the voters for a bond issue? We discussed going back to our permanent improvement levy and doing a replacement. So to catch everyone up to speed, in 1983, we had a permanent improvement levy on the ballot for two mills. That passed and every five years, we renewed that. Until 2013, when we turned it into a continuous permanent improvement levy, so we don't have to go to the voters every five years to ask for renewal. That was passed in 2013, but it didn't change the millage or the collection. So for the last forty years, we've been collecting on this two-mill levy. But the effective rate of what we're bringing in is around one mill. We're no longer bringing in two mills in that levy. So the idea is, if we ask the voters to replace that levy back to its original two mills, what we'd be doing is asking the community to possibly recommit the original two mills, but it would change from $1983 to $2023, which then, in that case, we would be collecting two mills again. In that option, if we ask the community to replace and go back to the original two mills for the permanent improvement levy, what we would be collecting is about $694,000 or about $700,000 more dollars in additional revenue for permanent improvements in the district. What that would bring in, if you project out, thanks to David, what could we possibly fund? What kind of project could we fund with that kind of income coming in for the permanent improvement? It could fund around an $11 million project, which is the exact amount needed for a new transportation facility. And real quick on the slide, you can see that the monthly cost for that is about $3.06 a month for a $100,000 home, which again, we talked about compared to other districts around us. We're going for 130, 170 million dollar projects. They're asking for hundreds of dollars per month. We're asking for a very, maybe asking for a very small increase to what someone might be paying per month. So again, that was one option we discussed last week. And again, that option will fund a transportation facility, but in all honesty, we don't communicate that to the community. That's all it could fund. It could fund exactly that. Does not take care of any other non-academic upgrades that are needed. So, we presented another option to the board, which was, another option could be the replacement two-mill permanent improvement levy with an increase of half a mill. That increase of would bring in about $1,40,000 in permanent improvement funding, which then would fund about $17 million project for the transportation facility plus smaller other projects along the way. Doesn't have to be all one project at once. It could be a staged project, depending on what's needed at what time. Resurfacing the track, replacing the stadium, fixing the fencing insane that's coming out of the ground literally. So some of those things in the district we can take care of on a staggered thing as well. That would also have an increase in the cost of the voter, but it would be about $4.52 per month for a $100,000 home. And again, that would also allow us to do not just the transportation facility, but the other facilities as well. So those are the two options we presented the board as a possibility. One is that replacement levy. The other one is replacement with a half-mill increase. Now, we also discussed for a moment, we don't have to do that. We could also, we could just leave everything as is and we could put on a new permanent improvement levy. But for those options, we'd be asking for one mill or one and a half mills and it would be a new levy, where this is a more replacement. I think some of the voters would understand and be able to digest a little bit. And then we just shared a little bit about what the ballot issue would look like to the board, so they could see exactly what would be on there. And what would be on there is again, the replacement or the replacement with an increase. It would say a half a mill for the increase and also we'll put on there annually we collect and also the amount per $100,000 home, again, the $3.06 and the $4.52 and those will be on the ballot issue. And again, the concept overall, again, big picture is going back to the voters and saying, hey, we had a permanent improvement levy to take care of our facilities back in 1983 that you approved for two mills. We are still taking care of our facilities on 1983 money and would you consider replacing it back to the original two mills so we can collect 2023 money to take care of our facilities? And then if the board chose to have an increase as well, we would then be able to communicate with the community exactly what we would be doing with that money, which would be a transportation building and a lot of those upgrades that we have in the district. And again, some other things that the committee's aware of, the facility advisory committee, you know, not just making those improvements, but like, for example, it does cost money to tear down the old transportation building or to tear down some other outbuildings or things that things are replaced. So again, there's just, there's costs in preparing the site if there's land that needs to be cleared and utilities. So there's just a lot involved, more than just replacing the fence or other things, so. So that's what I presented the board along with the help of Amy and Sarah and David Connolly for the board last week for your consideration. And then the board asked us to go back and talk to the facility advisory committee, which we had a meeting this past week and we did. And that was unanimous of what they were recommending, if you ask their opinion. They were recommending us to go for the 2.5. It made sense to them. If those are things we need done, why would we only ask for a transportation facility and then come back in a few months, a year and say, hey, we need to fund this stuff too. How are we going to do that? Maybe come back with another idea. The facility advisory committee said, go for everything that we need now, which again, I also agree with because that would take care of all the non-academic issues. Then we're simply focused on working with the Ohio Facility Construction Commission. So when we get the opportunity to do a funded project with them, we're solely focused on academics and we're focused on what they will fund, which again, school, school improvements, school renovations, et cetera. So that was long-winded, I know, but that was, I wanted to catch everyone up to speed on where we are at and what the board wanted to possibly consider today for a possible vote.
They will be the cheerleaders for that?
What?
They will be the cheerleaders for that and put it on the ballot?
Yes, yes. I believe that they will absolutely be cheerleaders for that. Because again, when we had a discussion, there wasn't much discussion and I got a few texts afterward from different people saying that the reason there wasn't much discussion was, quote, "It was a no-brainer." Like, we have issues in the district. Simply waiting, we've been waiting for a couple of years now. Simply waiting more is if the costs are just going to rise. Every time, every time a community goes out for a bond issue or levy campaign or whatever and it doesn't pass, when they come back around six months later, a year later, it costs more every single time. Costs doesn't, costs don't go down. So to them, it was kind of a no-brainer because it's something that needs to happen and let's move forward. Especially if, you know, if OFCC was coming to us in six months or a year, then that might be a tight window to do back-to-back, but if that's not, we're at two or three years out, do we have the option of doing something to this after that in five years? It's not an option. So they were full on working.
Can you even set work ethic for a few times? How does that fit in?
So, one of the big ideas that the community still, and the facility advisory committee still supports is a performing arts center or some sort of facility or addition to a facility that we can perform and showcase our students in all of our fine arts programs. In the past, when we have attempted that kind of facility, as a standalone facility, that has not passed. The voters have approved, for whatever reasons that may be. And if we were to add that to this idea and concept now, I'm not sure we could do a replacement levy. We might have to actually do a small bond issue, which then would not be co-funded and we'd be asking the community for a fully funded bond issue, only to come back in later for another bond issue for maybe a new building or improvements. And so the committee, knowing that, said, this concept makes sense and the thought was if we add it to this one as well, would that pass?
What does mean? In the chart, it shows 58% of communities said performing arts and 53% said sports. We haven't addressed performing arts at all.
Well, yeah, I get it. So right, right. So, if that were added now to this concept, it would double the cost. Would it be passed, et cetera? We get, et cetera. So the idea was, it is, that that will be attached to the next project, which would be academic in nature. OFCC may not fund performing arts center necessarily, unless it was attached to a building and maybe they fund the wall, but it makes sense that it's a part of academic concepts in nature. Plus, if we really wanted to pass, that everyone thinks is the best option. That is, that's where it's going to happen, not right now. So it's not a matter of not doing it. It's a matter of putting in the best scenario where we believe it's going to pass and be a part of the project, which is an OFCC project, if that makes sense.
It does. I just think everyone needs to know that.
Yes.
Because otherwise, we're doing like a chart that says, you can do this thing and then you're not addressing how we get to that finish line.
And I think it's one of those things where people would just, we would explain, but it comes down to, again, we all want it to happen. What's the best scenario for that to happen? I don't think it would, this project here, it's the next one, which would be, if there was a new school or renovations to Steel and Nord, possibly an addition to AJH or redoing Nord, whatever the decision's going to be, I think it makes, everyone agrees it makes sense to be a part of that larger project where it kind of fits in. Not maybe this one might stand out quite a bit and maybe give people reason not to vote for it. I don't know. I wasn't here back that long.
And I do believe that we did, that through the bond issue, even though we're building a building, we could say, this portion of it's going to renovate, build new school and whatever, but this portion of it is going to be all be part of the bond issue that's going to be on the ballot. So it wouldn't be a new bond issue. It would be one bond issue that's going to solve the performing arts centers as well as whatever building structure we need to add. Is that correct, Amy? Yes, well, Amy?
The only thing that I was going to add to what Mr. Molnar said was that in our communications, our meetings with the facility advisory committee from the very first meeting, it has been very evident that this was going to be a phased-in project and it was going to be funded through a variety of financing sources. So we've already accomplished some segments or phases of our project, AJH in 2002, right? And that helped, enabled us to ask for a lesser local share for the Powers building. In between there, there have been age-backed projects at the, at Nord and the high school, creative learning centers at AJH, the high school. There's currently a million-dollar makerspace being created, both in structure and about $500,000 worth of investment for a makerspace here at the high school. So again, I will just say that it's been very clear to the facility advisory committee and the boards that this would be phased in. So this would simply be kind of an intermediate phase again before we have, before we are able to see co-funding with the segment two classroom facilities assistance program and the facilities commission in about two years. So, we are, we've applied, we're in line. So every year about this time, we would expect Mr. Bill Prentissel to update us as to what our closing line is. So again, segmented projects and a variety of funding sources.
Oh, no, that's exactly right. And then on top of those things, we've also put in place some additional options to capture revenue from new development that would be coming to the community and that will likely take two to three years to develop. But the goal is to capture some tax revenue from things that are being constructed now and in the next couple of years. And we can redirect some of that money as well to bring down the cost of the performing arts center or the other facility. So it fits a really nice financing plan. The goal ultimately is to keep the taxes as low as possible, which is one of the reasons to move forward with the project now because the cost of that project keeps going up and we know we need it. So it sort of fits together very nicely.
And just to piggyback off of what David is talking about, if you recall, those are the tax investment financings that have been approved recently. Sandstone, we've had one with the city of Lorraine and one with the city of Amherst, which are called for infrastructure projects. When we begin receiving those revenues, they'll be segregated into a separate revenue code and we may be able to use those in order to fund the debt service that would be issued for that project.
And we brought David on to make, to do that, so that we would get what we needed from that, not just a blanket statement from commissioners, because they could have done that without us being involved at all. We're fortunate that township and county both reached out and we were able to strike a deal that I think was very beneficial to everyone from that perspective as opposed to just saying, here's what we're doing and having our say. Because they could have certainly done that. So we thank them for doing that. Is there other questions about the replacement levy that we discussed at the special board meeting last week? And Mike has updated this on today, because it is our intention, as we talked about at the special reading, that we will vote on that tonight. So it is on the bet on here, but if we have discussions, we can discuss that right now. So that when we get to the motion portion of it, we need to discuss that as a subject that we're all talking about. Is there questions or comments?
Can we, can we hear about the additional upgrades and the line I'm writing?
For?
On your turn, additional upgrade.
Well, again, the additional upgrades refers to, again, some of those items, for example, the cost of tearing down the transportation facility once the new one is built. Site renovations or possible costs for just other upgrades in the district. Possibly some that might be done in some of our softball, baseball fields or the soccer complex. So any other non-academic, except for performing arts center, non-academic issues that we uncover in the district. There are some outbuildings here at the stadium that we might need to replace as well. Some of them are very old and falling down. So those are some of the other upgrades or renovations or improvement, permanent improvements.
Can you forward to the ballot language? See here on the ballot language that it says, for the purpose of general permanent improvements. And like the time Pearl High Vice holds what permanent improvements means. So the ballot language doesn't restrict us from creating that we choose to do a permanent improvement in the district. Permanent improvement is anything with greater than five years useful length. So it could be, it could be anything from transportation facility, stadium upgrades, track refurbished, fencing, outbuildings, demolish the transportation center, build a transportation center, create infrastructure for the transportation center. So even there's all kinds of uses. I think, I think you're asking for non-academic, right? What besides athletics and transportation, you just said that you're asking?
Smaller upgrades, like do we need the earlors to be happy before the ballot?
What we would do over the next month, because there's some decisions we have to make, for example, like what we need to start deciding where the transportation facility is going to go. So we have to make those decisions. We go through the process of doing that. Then we will communicate with the community, again, the list of exactly what we would be doing with the money we're asking for.
But we don't need to decide what those dollars are to get this money through because we have the latitude to spend it however we want to, what you think is the most important.
Just, just to where we discussed, discussed a couple of those things, like for example, the track was resurfaced eight years ago, which needs to be resurfaced. Tennis court, the cracks are no longer to be filled. It needs to be redone entirely. Fence around stadium is coming out of the ground. It needs to be done. It's a safety issue. ADA compliance with our stadium seating. So we have identified already a lot of those things, what those are going to cost.
Other discussion or comments? One's good.
With that discussion, we move on to item six. Hearing of the public, no one has signed up to address this issue, so we move right into item seven, which would be the treasurer's review. Adam Treasurer?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Just want everyone to note that we are busy wrapping up the fiscal '23 year. Some of the numbers that I am presenting to the board this evening for advances to federal funds is due to a 440 check run that we had this afternoon. So we are, will be working up until the end of business on Friday to wrap up the business and then spend the following week, the week of quarters to the light, closing the fiscal year. Just wanted to let everyone in attendance realize that should the resolution to proceed this evening, either two or 2.5 mills for the permanent improvement levy, if approved by the board, the next step is, I have the error there, excuse me, the, 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 the recertified resolution will be submitted to the county auditor. We'll talk a little bit about that later. Go back, please. Oh, thanks, Sarah. Job description. Just want everyone to know that this is not an additional FTE in the office. In the last year or so, Bernie's retired, Bernie's align retired at the end of August last year. Katie Perkins from Student Services moved over to do records and benefits. Then Hannah Watkins was promoted to Assistant Treasurer. That was a new job description. Then Hannah left us and Heidi wanted to move over to the Administrative Assistant role, which is essentially bookkeeping and admin support in our department. And then you all approved a higher job description for payroll and benefits.
And then you all approved a higher job description for payroll and benefits, and that's where Sarah Trigo was hired into. So there's a little bit of movement in our office and you'll see that we have a lot of cross-training due to the changes in the office. But I think that's it for that. If I say, James, right? So there's my report, and so do we move into recommendations now, Mr. Engel?
We do.
So next slide, please. The board has asked this evening to approve the regular meeting minutes from the May 15 regular meeting. And two special board meetings, May 24th, which if you recall, was really for purposes of approving the budget forecast. And the June 14 special meeting, which was primarily for personal recommendations and discussion about the replacement levy. It asked that you approve the May 20, '23 financials. And if you recall, May 20, '23 financials, as every month, include tax reconciliation and fund detail. And then a big sum, which is a financial summary by fund and special cost center. And that includes all of the information for the year, the starting cash for each fund and special cost center, gradually collected by month, year-to-date, the expenditures year-to-date, the expenditures month-to-date, any encumbrances at this time, May 31st, and then the ending balance. And then you have the forecast reports for Fund 001, General Fund, emergency levy, Fund 16. And then you all see the checklist date for all of the electronic and hard BP checks produced through throughout the year. The next item then are, then announced, and those are invoices that you receive the date of the purchase order. Anything over $3,000, I do not have the law to approve, so I ask the board to approve them. The next item then is fiscal '24 temporary appropriations. As you all should know by now, or do know by now, excuse me. Temporary, temporary appropriations for the following year are due to be approved on or before June 30th. So what you see in the exhibit 8E, one page is the detail, one page is the summary. It is broken down by fund type, governmental funds, proprietary, fiduciary, et cetera. You'll see the general fund and the emergency levy, Fund 16. Fund 16 is interesting to note that actually falls under the special revenue category. And then the next thing that you all should know is that this needs to be certified to the county auditor, which I will do later this evening or tomorrow. And then another piece, this is like the third piece in setting up the financials for next year. The first item is the tax budget in January, you all approved the tax budget. Then it comes back to us after a budget hearing with the county auditor. And that generates a tax rates and amounts resolution that is approved by the board. And then we receive, if you want to go to the next slide, Sarah, next slide, and then we can come back. Here's the detail for the temporary appropriations, next page. Yeah, for projects, proprietary, fiduciary, et cetera. Notice that the appropriation for next year is very nearly $49.9 million. Next slide is the summary by general fund, special revenue, debt service, et cetera, et cetera. Again, $49.9 million. Next page. This is the official certificate of estimated resources. This is generated by the county auditor. And two things feed into this, the original tax rate due January 20th. And then the tax rates and amounts where the county auditor is certifying the effective millage for each of the levies and what revenues that will generate. Those amounts are on here. And then in the tax budget, in the column, the red column, estimated expenditures, you'll see by chance that it totals $49.9 million. So the temporary appropriation we're approving this evening is actually less, 63 cents less than this. Got to make sure that it's the amount for us. Next page. Okay, so let's go back to the second page of the recommendations. Thank you. The next item that you'll see on the agenda is for advances to federal funds. It's exhibit 8F, it was not in the Google Drive, it is here, make your place. You guys see it? All right. So these advances to federal funds represent monies that we have not yet received from the Department of Education in the form of project cash refunds. And also cash requests have not yet entered, which will enter tomorrow. We will not receive, we will not receive the unhighlighted dollars before the end of the month. So what I'm asking you is, this is different than in the past. Approve these advances to federal funds not to exceed the amount on each fund and special cost center. A little bit different than what I requested in the past. And then again, there are the then and now's, and then there are donations. And that is item 8A through 8G.
Entertained a motion? Second? Second? Is there any comments or discussion for Amy on her recommendation? None? Call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachols?
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
8H is a resolution declaring the necessity to replace existing 2 mil tax levies for the purpose of general permanent improvements, what we just discussed.
Entertained a motion? Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the replacement levy being a 2 point vote if you're voting on it? Any discussion? None? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wachols?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Motion.
And then the final resolution I'm asking the board to consider this evening is 8I. And that is a resolution declaring the necessity to replace the existing 2 mil tax levy for the purpose of general permanent improvements and increase that levy by 5%.
Entertained a motion? Is there a second? Discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachols? Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Motion. Moving right along to item number nine, seeing this is from the 13th.
Yeah, just real, real quick report, because I know it's summer and I like the things to do. But I wanted just to highlight our curriculum adoption for Language Arts K35. As you know, House Bill 436, it's allowed to first consider dyslexia laws. It required us to adopt a structured literacy program. And so our literacy committee did quite, did extensive work in identifying. Just identifying multiple programs that were available that met the requirements of law. They went through a process evaluating five options. Narrowed it down to two, and then went through a process to identify their final selection. So wanted to really highlight those that were on the adoption committee. They worked very hard, did a lot of amazing work. Probably was the most, most in-depth process that we've done in a long time. So wanted to commend everyone on the committee. If anyone is on the committee as a part of the process, you can stand up for a moment. I know a couple of you have to be here. Also want to recognize Brianna Hardin, a literacy coach who's just been in the process. And then also just want to recognize Mackenzie Hall, new curriculum director, who came in at the end. Is really going to be in charge of purchasing all those items. So they really did a phenomenal job, again, of a lot of hard work. I mean, they really took their time and really worked more deep into the materials and everything. So just want to say kudos to them, and it was a phenomenal job. And then real quick, just why Amplify CKLA, which was our final selection? Which we do have some samples over here, encourage the board to take a look at them after the board meeting, if you'd like to go through them. Also want to recognize and thank Dr. Messer and Mrs. Wachols. We had a curriculum committee meeting with both Mackenzie and Brianna last week. So they went over in depth quite a bit about the process. Many more slides, mine just presented just now. Also, they created this for you, just kind of a flow chart of, again, the processes for you to take with you, what the work was. And so one of the items on the agenda today is to approve the curriculum selection by the literacy committee. So again, kudos to everyone involved in that, I appreciate it, it was awesome. So thank you for that.
I have a question.
Yes.
In education, there is a plethora of initials and acronyms. What does CKLA stand for?
CKLA stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts, from Amplify, Amplify is a common word.
Any other questions for anyone who was on that committee?
I just wanted to say a personal thank you. Also, my son was in one of the pilot classes, and so it's a very, I, I really liked the program. It got him really excited about reading and some of the other, tie in other subjects like social studies, I've seen reading as well. So he did a lot of independent learning during the year with some of the topics that they went over in language arts. So I really appreciated the program and thank you all for your hard work on it, and it's great, great.
Real quick, kudos to Mackenzie, I threw her in the last meeting, she was like a heel and everything. And so in, in the final deal, I think we were saving about $40,000 per year by, by this proposal. And I told her to go back again and say, you know, that's a, that's a big chunk of money in this first year. So it's possible to get all the savings, but maybe make two payments, one this July, one next July. So she went back and worked with them, and they approved us to do like a half payment now, half payment. So that goes to help the budget as you move forward. So thank you, Mackenzie, for that. I know the board appreciates that, so I want to highlight that.
Any other questions on this, on the new recommendation options? Anything else to add?
So my turn, just a couple of things since we last met this morning. I had the opportunity to go out to Community College, and it was their day five of an educator externship program that was put together by the Lorraine County Business Advisory Committee. And the Business Advisory Committee is local districts along with business partners, partners in industry, the local colleges, and Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce. And they had this five-day externship where they had 62 teachers across the county apply to be a part of this. And Colleen Pete, who's one of our family consumer science teachers, she also teaches on college for readiness up here at the high school, was selected to do that. And so it was just a celebration of their culminating event. They had to do a presentation about what they learned. They spent time at Rigid, they spent time at Cleveland Clinic, Lorraine Community, the college, and a couple of other places. And it was just a really well-put-together program, and I think they learned a lot as far as what other industries are out there and credentialing opportunities are out there for our students to engage in. And it was, it was a lot of really cool stuff. So that was a cool thing this morning. Want to remind everyone that we have our second harvest summer distribution set up for July 12th. It'll be one of the big events, open to the entire county. So if anyone is interested in volunteering, let myself or Jill Mayorka know. I think we still have spots open. It's going to be about from 3:00 to 5:00 on the AJH Empowers campus. And then the last thing, I just want everyone to send good vibes out into the universe tomorrow morning. We were notified late last week that we are one of the finalists for the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. If we get this grant, that's an additional $270,000 next year to help us build up and support our programs. We're going to focus on grades 6 through 12. And so some of the things we're looking at with that are professional development. We're looking at possibly adding an adolescent-specific literacy coach just for one year to help support that professional development and working in classrooms for grades 6 through 12. And so we have our interview tomorrow morning at 9:30. It's at 9:30 tomorrow. So just, if you happen to notice the time tomorrow morning, send good vibes out to the universe that I don't trip over my tongue and say the wrong things. But that's exciting, thank you. Yeah. That is all the conclusion of my report.
JBS has not yet asked this month. We're waiting till Thursday of this week, just because of the counting aspect. So I don't have anything to share with you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to do that if I needed to. Any questions? Mr. Molnar, you received something last week, and you haven't told us about that.
Oh, yes.
Would you like to share that back with everyone, free word?
On Thursday.
So I, I was awarded by the School Nutrition Association of Ohio as Superintendent of the Year for Nutrition Services. So it was an honor to get that award. Really, I mean, the award really goes to Deanne Kelly, our nutrition service supervisor and her entire staff. Because I think, you know, we look back on the year and all the things that happened with different visitors, and we had all kinds of stuff happening. And all the work they put into kind of making nutrition services fun and also nutritious for students. I mean, I got the award, but they deserve all the credit. So I was just happy to go down, be there with Deanne last Thursday in Columbus, and receive that award, and we had a good time, so.
And Deanne has done a phenomenal job this year, having been all over the country, for the most part, representing the Emperor Schools nutritional program. So kudos to her for everything that she's done. I think it's been phenomenal. She's in California, she's presented, she's presented in Columbus several times. So I think it's great that she's out there and showcasing how independent lunch program can still survive in today's world because there's not a lot of, they have not committed to someone running it.
And, and real quick, the award really comes out because the board and administration, teachers are so supportive. You know, again, sending, a lot of districts would not send her Washington D.C. to be the advocate for our students in Ohio to the, to the representatives there. We do, we encourage her to go, we support that. So really, it's, it was recognition of us as a district, as a whole, supporting her, her efforts, doing the best job she can for the kids. So it's a award for everyone.
Are there board updates or committee reports? Dr. Messer, what are you sharing with us tonight?
Well, hopefully a short legislative update. So next slide, please. So a few points from the Senate's version of the budget for body education. So they just passed the $2 billion, proposed $2 billion phase in for a universal voucher program, which will be expanded over the next 10 years. And opposition to the House version of the budget, the Senate eliminated the teacher-based salary of upping it to 40K. And also the proposal, proposal of expanding funding for preschool deals for public school students. They are also, in their version of the budget, they're shifting K through 12 public education oversight from Ohio State Works Education to a new Department of Education Works, whatever. From the, who will be appointed by the governor, so an official appointed by the governor. There's concerns there for transparency and educational feelings. And they also have in their version to continue the commitment of their school funding. That was in place through the last round. By any budget, other, I'd like to guess from their version of the bill, major. Other, I'd like to guess, from their version of the bill, major cuts to, unfortunately, food bank state funding versus the House's version. They also are raising the income eligibility for government-funded childcare to 145% of poverty level, whereas the current is under 22%, still 145%. And then, lastly, they are trying to include a measure to acquire for consent on social media platforms such as TikTok. Next slide, please. In other news, House Bill 117, which passed, it looks to eliminate retention under the third grade reading guarantee, expand the grades for providing assistance of reading intervention, and the ELA assessment will administer once in the third grade. House Bill 6 passed, which is through the House Higher Education Committee, titled the Save Women's Sports Act. House Bill 8, which is the Parents' Rights, also passed. It requires study schools to adopt a policy of parental notification regarding student health and well-being, and also instructional materials with sexual ed. Senate Bill 104 is currently in hearings, also revise the operations of the Calic Credit Program, that also includes, and there's some language for students, public and charter, non-public schools, public and private colleges, and the chancellor of higher education and superintendent of public instruction. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 91 passed in committee. The language has changed, so laws around fraud, waste, and public funds. House Bill 145, again, is currently in hearings. It looks to expand critical subdivision and joint purchasing authority, including purchase for construction services. House Bill 187, is in hearings as well. It's modified procedures used by the Tax Commissioner to conduct property tax sales assessment ratios, and two bills, excuse me, the passing has been put up for debate. House Bill 216 requires the Department of Education to develop a process for requesting the investigation of schools' compliance with policy of harassment and intimidation laws. And Senate Bill 188 requires discussion of the for-profit status of community school operators and post-secondary education institutions on various promotional materials and contracts for. Next slide, yeah, thank you. So, the House voted, you know, with the citizens' motion, it's their version of the bill, so now, both budget versions are being worked out in conference committees, so the call to action from OSBA is, of course, speak with our local legislators about preserving public education, and blocking some of these measures that appears to not be in favor of public education, and there's a small, sorry, but the print's small, but there's a list of the conferences for these committee reconciliations as well. And then, last slide, thank you, just the list of upcoming events and treaties through OSBA, four innovative webinars, some budget analysis webinars, well, some legal, some legal and legislative webinars coming up, and then, there's open House for Northeast Center of Rest Regions in Sandusky in August, and the Regional Ball Conference will be in October.
Questions for Amanda? I would encourage everyone, if we could, if it's so close, the meetings that's going to happen in Sandusky, definitely all trying to do that. So, go keep us, go remind us of that, and I'm sure we'll all get an email about registration for that, but I think it would be a good thing for us all. Sometimes they're hours and hours away. The other? Anything else, if you have, or personally? Any other committee reports? Or board updates we need in the year? If not, we move into personnel recommendations.
Excuse me. So, these are your traditional June personnel recommendations, some final hires, also some changes in contract status. I do want to point out, if Sarah just noticed this, I'll make sure that we possibly have to make some slight change, but in 11I, Jessica Davis, 08FT, she probably is 0.8, next page. Second, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The point is missing.
The point is missing.
Yes, the point's missing, we missed the point.
So, she's not, she's not doing a job today, she's doing .8, so don't make that.
Happy Monday.
But also, just want to mention to the board that we're agreeing with OMC, we had our negotiations with them over the last few months, and came to an agreement that's mutually beneficial to everyone, and I know Rob Jacoby's here, who was the lead negotiator from OMC, so, Rob, thanks for coming tonight. Anything you'd like to share? He did not want you, by the way, but I'm going to ask anyway.
Wow. Yeah, I'm good. Speaking, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
It was great working with Rob and the team, and again, beneficial agreement, that agreement, so they got a lot to speak, and look for the board to approve it tonight. So, with that, I want to recommend personnel items A through J to the board.
Motion in a second? Have a second? Is there comments or questions on any of those items under 11A through J? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Mrs. Wackel. Dr. Messer. Mr. Zepha.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi. Moving on to Item Number 12 on the agenda this evening, would be educational recommendations.
Yes, most of those recommendations had to do with some summer programming, but also, again, contracts that we prepare for next year with our outside purchase services and other educational partners, and so, with that, just like the board did, consider approving educational items A through J.
Have a motion in a second, please. Is there discussion or comments on any of those items, educational recommendations? Here you are seeing them, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Mrs. Wackel. Dr. Messer. Mr. Zepha. Mr. Engel.
Item 13 on tonight's agenda would be business recommendations.
Yeah, just five recommendations, again, I can do district business, some agreements, and again, the board set a chance to do all these things and ask questions over the weekend, but you did, so I answered most of them, all of them, so did Amy and Sarah. So, with that, just like recommend business items A through J.
So, motion in a second? Any discussion or comments on Items 13A through J?
Yes, I believe it is, yes. And so, just in case you want to know, they went through the process of going, looking back again to Crocker Park, Crocker Park wouldn't commit to gigs, then they went to a couple other various places, locations, where the cost was too high, or again, they wouldn't commit, one, for example, wanted to wait to see if they could reserve any space for weddings and so on, and so, when they finally got some lunch at Cali, it looked like a great opportunity and fun time, never done it before, so they decided to, let's go for it, see how it goes. So, that's how we got to Cali.
Other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Mr. Zepha. Dr. Messer. Dr. Wackel. Mr. Engel. Okay.
I don't believe there's a need to go into a discussion. The fact that we made a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second for adjournment, is there any special comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Mrs. Wackel. Dr. Messer. Mr. Zepha. Mr. Engel.
Thank you all for coming, have a great rest of the week.
Good job.